And with computer. Oh, nine people are in the waiting room. Yes, I can see our salon. Susan Del Bono. And 36714854, I don't know who you are. I went, I, I, I redid the, the, the training today and it reiterated that that's supposed to be there. So, and it wasn't just the webinar, it was a meeting and they said. Litchfield County Ax House is here. Ed Moan is here. George LaCapra. I don't know who this 36714854 is. Hi, everybody. Me, co-host.
Hello, everyone. I see someone signed on as Joe-HP. Is that Joe Hartz?
I don't know what that is. Yes, I have an HP computer.
Okay, but that is, that is you, Joe, right?
Yeah, it should be me, yes.
All right, thank you. I'm just gonna put you, you and me back on mute again.
Okay.
Until we get rolling. Right now, I see, just for everyone's certification, I see myself, Stacy, you, Joe, and Ed Moan, and Susan Del Bono, Litchfield County. Yeah, oh, I'm sorry. And in the waiting room, I see Susan Del Bono, Litchfield County Ax House, and a phone. 367 number, area code. And I see that Stephen Byrne just joined. I see Tom Mueller just joined, Bill Guerra just joined. Liz Jamison just joined. So I have 6:55, so we're not going to start until seven. Stacy. Just for a few moments.
Bill Guerra.
I see ya. Thanks, Bill.
You're welcome, sir. Thank you.
You want to unmute all the?
And there we go.
How many people there? So.
And the video is on now too, if you want it to be.
Just, does anybody have any, like, operational questions before we get going?
No, you'll see at the top right, at the top of the, of the tab bar, you'll see mute, stop video, right, participants.
Yeah, I still, I just want to make sure no one else has any questions. Although, Bill, you need to use your camera. I can see your chin in your bottom lip.
I don't see any of that.
But you have phones, to turn off your phones, otherwise there's going to be feedback.
Yes, please. Any, anybody that has a cellphone, please mute it.
Okay. Well, that's a lot better.
Wait a minute, there are some people still muted. I'm gonna unmute.
How can we hear if we have the cellphone muted?
Uh, just mute your voice, so we don't hear you.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
I said, just want to mute your cellphone, so we don't hear you.
That's how I'm getting the media is on my cellphone.
Or your computer.
He's using his phone.
What are you using? Are you using your computer for the video, Tom, and your cellphone for the audio?
He does not have video. He's using the phone feature.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm using the phone for everything, except, you know, I do have the meeting packet up on the computer screen.
I see, okay. You know, it's picking up me through here and me through there.
It is. Okay, I put up the agenda and it's got all of the meeting materials that I can scroll through. It should theoretically be on your screen.
Yes, it is.
We are one minute till, so any last questions?
I don't have any of those buttons that Bill was talking about. All I see is a small Stacy and a record button.
I think that's because you're using your phone. I, I have a feeling that the phone doesn't have all the functionality of the computer.
Yeah, that's right, Ralph. You're, you're right.
What if you just hover your, you have a mouse to just hover over the screen, up top or bottom, maybe that'll pop something up?
Hey, Ralph, did you turn you on your video?
No.
Okay. All right, I'm just curious. All right, I can turn them off if you'd like. Cause Tom Mueller's, cause his videos are.
I can do it to him if he wants.
Embarrass anybody. All right.
Yeah. I, I found a row of bu, rows, stuff on the bottom, so maybe I'm okay now.
Yeah, just hover your mouse over there when you want.
Okay, now, there's a chat feature here as well, so don't use chat, right?
Well.
Just remember, anything you put in there is going to be seen by every.
Right, yeah, chat goes to everyone.
Whose phone is ringing?
That's my house phone. We don't answer that.
Jeez, Tom.
All right, Stace, I got 7:01. Can we get the show on the road?
Yes, as soon as I get my.
Want to put the agenda up first, please?
It is, oh, it was. Hang on one second. Your screen sharing is paused. For some reason, everything muted. There we go. Okay, I will get everybody in now. All, and we are going to be live. And we're on.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April meeting of the Thomason Planning and Zoning Commission. Seated for tonight's meeting will be Bill Guerra, Elizabeth Jamison, Joe Hartz, Tom Mueller, and myself, Ralph Salone. So I think this is a first for Thomason. This is the first commission meeting ever being held digitally. And I think we're all going to be going through a little bit of a learning curve, so let's, I'll be patient and polite, and we'll get through it together.
Yeah, and someone has to turn off their phone, if, if, if you have your phone on.
Yeah, any, any cellphone should be muted, so we don't have to listen to the ringers. I ask that everybody be patient and polite, and it is critically important that you fully identify yourself with your name and address before you speak, for any reason. The commission members don't necessarily need to identify with their address, but they do need to state their full name before speaking, so we know who's speaking, especially when a motion is being made or a comment is being made. So those are all the highlights. In the chat section of your screen, you should see a a little button that says raise hand. If, if you wish to, this is for the public members. If you wish to speak during the public comment section or something, click, raise your hand, and we'll recognize that way. If you're joining only through audio by phone, I don't think you're going to have that option, and we'll have to see how we handle that. And I need to remind everybody that during a public hearing, all the comments from the public and/or from the applicant need to be made directly to the chairman, and no comment should be answered by anyone until I direct them to do so. That's the only way we're going to maintain an orderly meeting here. So with that, let's jump right into our agenda. And first, our agenda is a public hearing on special permit application number 2019-12-26-01 for an accessory apartment at 235 Smith Road in a RA80 residential zone. The applicant has asked that we just continue that to our May 6 meeting. Tom Mueller, would you make a motion to continue that to our May meeting?
Make a motion to continue the public hearing for special permit application number 2019-12-26-01 to the May 6 meeting.
Thank you. Liz, you want a second then?
I'll second.
All right, do me a favor. Let's get in the habit of just announcing ourselves before we make a motion or second something, okay? Even though I specifically asked you to. Um, so a motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Oh, I, I gotta, I forgot to say something in the beginning. So any vote we take is going to be a roll call vote. So we'll go through it that way. So on the motion to continue the public hearing for an accessory apartment at 235 Smith Road, Bill Guerra, how do you vote?
Bill Guerra votes yes.
Thank you. Elizabeth Jamison, how do you vote?
Elizabeth Jamison votes aye.
Thank you. Joe Hartz, how do you vote?
Joe Hartz, aye.
Tom Mueller?
Tom Mueller, aye.
And Ralph Salone also votes aye. The motion passes unanimously. Tom, now we need a motion to continue the public hearing on the home occupation permit for the, the same address. It's application number 2019-12-26-01. Again, for home occupation at 235 Smith Road.
Hey, Tom Mueller, make a motion to continue the public hearing on special permit application number 2019-12-26-01 for home occupation for mobile hair styling at 235 Smith Road.
Thank you. And who seconds that motion, please?
Joe Hartz seconds it.
Thank you, Joe. Any discussion on the motion? All right, again, roll call vote. Bill Guerra, how do you vote?
Bill Guerra votes yes.
Elizabeth Jamison?
Elizabeth Jamison, aye.
Joe Hartz?
Joe Hartz, aye.
Tom Mueller?
Tom Mueller, aye.
Ralph Salone also votes aye. Stacy, that motion carries unanimously. Next on our agenda is a public hearing for a special permit application number 2020-12-26-01. That number has got to be wrong, Stacy.
Yes, it's supposed to be, oh, it is actually on here is, oh, it is 2020-01-29. So the 12 was put on there mistakenly. It should be 01. It was noticed correctly. That was my typo in doing the agenda.
So 2, 2020-01-what?
29-01.
Thank you. All right. Again, next on our agenda is a public hearing on a special permit application number 2020-01-29-01 for an accessory apartment at 154 Baum Drive in an RA80 residential zone, and the applicant is Susan Del Bono. And Stacy, would you please unmute Susan?
And Susan, you are unmuted. Are you there, Susan? Where did she go?
Susan Del Bono, are you there?
I don't, yes, she's, uh, she's not on the participant list.
I see her listed. She might have stepped away from the computer for a moment. Susan Del Bono, are you there? Well, let, let's continue on. We'll check back in a few minutes. In general, this is for an existing apartment in her home, was originally there where they bought the house. They converted it for use by her son many years ago. I forget the exact.
89.
89, thank you. And unfortunately, her son passed away. But at this point, Ms. Del Bono is, operates a horse farm, and is having trouble running the farm herself, and she wants to use the the existing apartment for a caretaker's apartment, or to, to house a caretaker. And she wrote us a, a very lengthy letter and took many, many pictures. And let's just check one more time. Ms. Del Bono, are you there? Can you hear us? All right, still nothing. Stacy, do you want to go offline for a moment, if you can call her on her, on your, on the landline?
Yes, hang on one second.
Her cell, I guess her cellphone number's listed on the application. Oh, I see she just dropped off the, the attendee list. She may, maybe she was having computer issues. Stacy got her voicemail.
No.
Well, until, until we see her pop back in, does any member of the commission have any questions or issues with this application?
This is Joe Hartz. I have a question.
Okay. Hey, Joe, can you talk a little closer to the microphone?
You bet. This is Joe Hartz. I have a question.
Go right ahead, Joe.
Is there a size limitation on this? On an accessory apartment, and do they, does she meet the size limitation?
There's a minimum size, right, Stacy? You're, you gotta unmute yourself.
Okay. The unit shall not exceed 750 square feet or 40% of the total area of the home after proposed construction or conversion, whichever is less.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Susan.
Oh, gosh.
Perfect. We were wondering what happened to you.
I, I, apparently my privacy wasn't allowing me to speak or anything.
Well, this is a public hearing. You can't do anything in private.
No, no. The privacy setting.
I know, I know. So Ms. Del Bono, you know, I tried to explain the circumstances behind what's going on based on what I read in your letter. And I probably didn't do as good a job as you could have done. Do you want to just kind of give the commission a quick overview?
Uh, I'm, I'm not sure what, what it is you need. I have a horse farm here in Thomason. I've had it since 1989. In 96, the apartment was put in for my son who died that year. That's why.
I'm very sorry.
Thank you. That's why the apartment exists. I have been utilizing it as a apartment for a caretaker for the horses. And am applying to make that official.
Thank you very much. Now, Stacy, did, did we come up with an answer for Joe's question? I get, and the answer really is, does the size of the accessory apartment meet the regs?
I'm doing some quick math here. If you wanted to continue on, well, no.
No, we'll, we'll just hang out and wait.
No pressure.
Not at all. There's only, you know, 400 people here looking at you. And I just want to remind everybody that Stacy, I muted you for a minute, so the echo. I just want to remind everyone that anything you type in that chat box goes out to everybody.
Yep.
Hold on, hold on. Okay, go ahead.
This is a very loose calculation, just unquick and dirty. It's about 850.
It's a studio apartment. It doesn't even have a separate bedroom. It's not big.
Yeah, if we want, I can pull up the pictures.
Yes, please, Stacy. Stacy, I should have said this before, but when we do that calculation, we, we exclude non-living space, like, like closets, bathrooms, et cetera, et cetera.
That would probably bring her down, because there were two closets in the, in the calculation.
And, and a bathroom. It does, it doesn't even take up the whole downstairs.
Yes, if you can, I'm trying to get to the picture where you can see. I believe the one I have up right now, Susan, the door by the refrigerator, that's the door to the other part of the basement that is part of your residence.
That's correct. What's beyond that door is my residence. And on the other side where the stove is of that wall is all of my, the guts of the house, the oil tank and the furnace and my laundry, blah, 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 storage. the guts of the house, the oil tank and the furnace and my laundry, blah, 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 storage.
So Stacy, can I ask you to just subtract out the closets in the bathroom and other, any other non-livable space, just to verify? And in the meantime, while Stacy's doing that, does, and I'm just going to mute you, Stace. In the meantime, while Stacy's doing that, does any other member of the commission have any questions, comments, or concerns?
No.
All right. I'm gonna, I'm gonna open it up to the public. We're gonna have to, again, this is a first. We're gonna have to see what happens. I'm gonna unmute everyone for the moment, and I'm gonna remind anybody that wants to comment from the public that to be patient because you're probably gonna double with someone else when you try to talk. And again, it's critically important that you announce your name and an address just before you start speaking. So does any member of the, of the public wish to comment on this? All right, so not hearing anyone from the public that wishes to comment, I'm going to mute all the lines again and continue on. I'm gonna remind everyone from the public that I will check back and make sure that nobody wants to make any further comments.
Stacy, unmute.
Susan?
Yes.
This is Stacy again.
Hi, Stacy.
Hi. I just wanted to clarify, I'm looking at the paperwork you submitted where you give all the dimensions.
Okay.
Okay, so just to clarify, you have a kitchen, the kitchen hallway, the closet, the small closet and bedroom, a bathroom, and the living room slash bedroom. And then the, the items on the right-hand side of the page, that was you measuring the same things from a different location, yes?
From a different, I don't know what you mean by.
Interior versus exterior?
Oh, yeah, I was trying to figure it out because you can't really.
Well, then in that case, that she is okay. I mistakenly included one of the items from the right-hand column, so that significantly changes things. And now she is under, she's under seven hundred.
Easily.
Joe, does that satisfy your question?
Yeah, this is Joe Hartz. Thank you very much. Good answer. I gotta find a better spot.
But just also for your review, Ms. Delbono provided detailed information to answer each of the questions in the general design criteria in twenty-one ten B. And referencing and linking them to the pictures that she provided to you. That picture shows the rear of the house, but the doors are the entrance and exit to the apartment. It also shows that it's not a detached unit. Ms. Delbono states that she's the primary occupant and has been since nineteen eighty-nine. She showed on that one picture that I referred to that there is direct interior access without going outside. And even though it is a first-floor unit, she does have the two separate access points and exit points. And as you can see from the pictures, there is no more than one bedroom.
So if I summarize everything, Stacy, would I be correct in saying that her application meets all of our regulation requirements?
I believe it does.
Okay. Again, does any, any member of the commission have any questions, comments, or concerns?
No.
Okay, Stacy, do me a favor, just unmute everybody so I can just check with the public one more time.
Okay, everyone is unmuted.
All right, again, this is a public hearing. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this application? Okay, not hearing any public comment, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, Tom Mueller, I make a motion to close the public hearing on special permit application number two zero two zero dash, I'm not sure about the number now, zero one dash two nine dash one.
That is the correct number.
For an accessory apartment at one fifty-four Baum Drive.
Thank you. Will someone second that, please?
Elizabeth Jameson, second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion? Again, roll call vote. Bill Guerra, how do you vote?
Bill Guerra, yay.
Elizabeth Jameson, how do you vote?
Elizabeth Jameson, aye.
Joe Hartz, how do you vote?
Joe Hartz, aye.
Tom Mueller, how do you vote?
Tom Mueller, aye.
And Russell also votes aye. So Stacy, the motion to close the public hearing passes unanimously. Would you do me a favor and mute the participants that are on the commission? Now, while we have this application in front of us, gentlemen and ladies, let us continue and vote on it. Does someone wish to make a motion to approve or deny this application?
Tom Mueller, I make a motion to approve special permit application number two zero two zero dash zero one dash two nine dash one for an accessory apartment at one fifty-four Baum Drive.
Thank you. Does, can I get a motion to, can I, can I get that motion seconded, please?
Elizabeth Jameson. Oh, let Joe go.
All right, so officially, we're having Joe Hartz second that. Any discussion on the motion? Bill Guerra, how do you vote on the motion?
Bill Guerra says yes.
Elizabeth Jameson?
Elizabeth Jameson, aye.
Joe Hartz?
Joe Hartz, aye.
Tom Mueller?
Tom Mueller, aye.
Russell also votes aye. So Stacy, that special permit application is approved unanimously.
Okay. Susan Delbono, I will contact you tomorrow if you'd like, so we can chat about this further. But you're, unless you have anything else, you are complete for the evening.
So I can hang up?
If you'd like, or you can hang out and enjoy the party.
Take care, guys. Good luck.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If I can figure out how to hang up, I will.
Well, Stacy, you can hang her up, can't you? Oh, never mind. She, she figured it out.
She did.
Next on our agenda is a public hearing of the town zoning map amendment note that's tabled. Next we have.
The text amendments, I believe, or no, that might be the order in which it came in the packet, but I don't know. That's the order on the.
I don't see that on the.
It's further down in the new public hearings opening tonight. Yeah, the next item on is at the top of page two of the agenda.
Right, for the, the ax throwing.
Yes.
We just, we, we accepted the application last month, right?
Yes.
Right. So, so this month, we're going to start the public hearing for a special permit application number two zero two zero dash zero two dash one. Zero one, for recreational ax throwing. There for recreational ax throwing at four thirty-seven South Main Street in an M-one light manufacturing zone. And the applicants are, is it Litchfield?
Litchfield County Ax House.
Okay, thank you. So again, do you want to give us a quick overview of what you'd like to do?
Sure, we're planning to have a BYOB ax, recreational ax throwing facility at four thirty-seven South Main Street in Thomaston, Connecticut. My name's Joe Kucha, by the way, six thirty-one Brandy Hill Road, Torrington, Connecticut.
And I'm Chris Roche for fifty-one Jacob Street, Bristol, Connecticut.
Okay, so the, the BYOB part is not part of this application, so let's, let's leave that out of the discussion, okay?
Sure.
And we'll, we'll have to pick that up at a later date.
Ralph, this is Bill Guerra.
Yes.
So unless the BYOB is material to the applicant's business model, because if, if they cannot operate without doing BYOB, then having this discussion of the applicant is a moot point.
Well, you make a good point. Let, let's let the applicant answer that question. Is, is the BYOB portion of what you want to do material to your business, or is it?
It's something that we can.
I would say it's detrimental to our business, yeah.
But it's something that we can work in, in accord. We did submit a special permit for that. So it's something that we are addressing with the town. I think as far as establishing the operations for us to move forward, I don't think that's detrimental to the situation, to the discussion right now. I think that's something that we can, we can progress with further on.
Okay, and the reason I bring that up is that the application that you submitted did not make it in time to get added to this meeting. So it wasn't, it wasn't noticed for this meeting, so we.
No, not for this meeting. We anticipated that it would likely be next month.
If I may, Stacy Savchak. I had spoken with Mr. Kucha and he and Mike Panett, the owner of the property, submitted a signed application for the BYOB portion of the business. Their hope was that the commission would consider the use for recreational ax throwing tonight so that they could, if you approved, move forward understanding that there would still be a public hearing at a later time regarding the ability to have the BYOB portion.
So for tonight, we'll just talk about the ax throwing.
Would you say that that was what we discussed, Joe? Kucha?
Yes, I think that's, so in anticipation of our opening date, it's likely that our opening date is gonna overlap the next month's application. So I don't, I don't think it's gonna really complicate things as much as we might anticipate it to, if that makes any sense. I think everything, I, I see this working pretty fluently as far as timeframes.
So you're saying that it would not necessarily impact you to have to wait another month for the BYOB portion of this?
No.
Okay.
So with that being said, Stacy, I'd like to ask you to walk us off through the drawings that were submitted.
Sure. Okay, I'm on the application form itself right now. This is the initial, in your, in commissioners and yours package, is the initial layout of the floor plan. I was later sent an additional one that gave some locational direction. So if you can hang on one moment, I will get that up for you. Hang on one second. I'll put this up while I'm looking for it, so you can look at the site plan at least.
So the, the site plan is on there, or was a moment ago. If you're sharing your screen, we're seeing what you're seeing.
Okay, well, no, I thought I had changed it because you can, in theory, have just one specific document, but maybe I did not press that.
The, so this question is for the Litchfield County Ax House. How much of the building do you plan on occupying?
I believe it's estimated through the taxes in our lease that we're occupying one-third of the building.
And is it the, the front third, the middle third, the back third, the side third, which, what third?
Correct. It'll be the front third of the building. There's approximately, I believe, four windows on the side that have been replaced that are new. We occupy all the way to the back of those. We are occupying the loading dock as well. So, and that'll typically be our workspace to cut new target wood and make it if, in basically just a maintenance and workplace. The front of the building, we will occupy the front, the front center door. That's gonna be our main entrance. The loading dock door will be our secondary fire escape. To the right of the build, to the right of the entry, you will have your reception area and waiver signatures. Everybody's gonna either have an online waiver or they'll sign a waiver. Hopefully by then, we'll have them on like a tablet, something digital. Right now, we do hard copies. To the left, we'll have a small staff bathroom. Around the corner, you'll notice, if you were to walk in through the front, which would be your, on the left side of the page that you're seeing right now, that center door. Women's bathroom will be the first bathroom that you see highlighted bold. And the men's bathroom will be the second. Just adjacent to the men's room in that corner is a sprinkler closet. The basement stairs to the, more to the center there, that is completely walled off, so there is no public access to any stairs to the basement or anything like that. Most likely, it'll be a maintenance closet up above it, probably for audio.
Stacy, Stacy, go back to the floor plan. Ross, hold it there.
Across the back, you'll see those are our six full lanes. Those will incorporate two targets each. At first, there's two, there's two lines in the center. Those are both throwing lines. That's typically where they'll, so you start from one and it's much like darts, you can't go over the line. Those will hold anywhere from six to twelve people per lane at any time. The two single lanes, you'll see smaller ones up to the top of the page. Those are gonna hold one or people for smaller groups and for anticipating that league throwers are gonna wanna practice. So if they come by themselves and they wanna practice, they'll have their own space.
What are the rectangles right below those two lanes?
Those are just like our top tables. It's gonna be, if you know, for purses. Those are just like our top tables, it's going to be if you know for purses, anything, your cell phone. Where we are anticipating that there will be some plugs that are located around, so. People can charge their phones, things like that.
And the other the other rectangles with the smaller boxes around them, I again, I'm assuming are 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 tables with chairs around them?
Yeah, those will have bar stools. It's we're likely we're going to have stools and stools or chairs. I'm probably I'm anticipating stools to save space, we can slide them under the tables. So most likely the smaller single lanes will also have stools as well.
And is that a foosball table I see kind of in the middle of everything?
Yeah, we figured maybe some foosball, a pool table down to the bottom. We were thinking about like, I've seen like the jumbo checkers, those are pretty neat. Yeah, if we can fit it, we're hoping maybe a cornhole board, just something to occupy people for fifteen minutes of waiting time while they're waiting for their session to go in. We don't anticipate allowing people to loiter. There's word like in not speaking in the in the BYOB sense just yet, but our anticipation is to have people in. My quickly moderately quickly. Being associated to their lane with their coach incorporated into their hands, having a good time and then exiting on to their next thing, you know. And the same thing as you would see at a billiards, really, you're paying for your time and once you're done with it, you're typically on to your next venture.
Now, to the left of. The pool table, I see four objects, what are they?
Those are anticipated arcade games.
And then behind the arcade games is. A wall and then something else.
Yeah, that's that's going to be the reception desk and to the very lower left, that separate room will be me and Chris's office for. Any kind of management situation, but now we're anticipating two monitors there. And then up to the left that you'll see the blank table.
Yes.
There, that'll be that we're anticipating for the waiver signature area. So whether it be some tablets or touchscreen, the two in one computers nowadays, they're moderately inexpensive. So I think I'm hoping we can utilize two of those with some like PDF Acrobat files and just upload them into a cloud as people are saved.
Now, am I correct in saying that you're not going to make any modifications to the exterior of the building?
No, we are not. There, well, I know, not on our behalf. I should say Mike Panett is what you see outside that bolded box, oh, I lost it.
I'm sorry, I was just going to put up the site plan.
So there is there was a bolded area on the exterior, we are going to need a handicap ramp. So he's he's putting in a handicap with a little bit of a bigger concrete pad at the top.
But you're required by the ADA to do that, right?
Yeah, every everything in there has been anticipated for ADA, which is. Ramp and stuff. Yeah, most that's majorly part of the reason that we didn't have a full enclosed. The lanes that we anticipated a forty eight inch space. Because even on a wheelchair basis, some of the motorized wheelchairs are a little bit larger than the I should say they're a little bit wider than your. Your manually controlled wheelchairs, so we're just trying to anticipate any kind of. Situation that may arise, you know, we want to overcompensate for safety and for accessibility.
So what about signage? You plan to put any sign is up?
We'd like to.
We'd we'd like to, Stacy had mentioned something about having a group sign out front.
Is that part of their paperwork that they submitted?
They did not provide me anything as far as signage. I had guessed.
You're cutting in and out.
I'm cutting in and out, okay, great. I had suggested that that would be something that they would want to take up with Mr. Panett. Seeing as he has other businesses in the building as well.
All right, guys, so. When you do want to put up a sign, you're going to have to come back and see Stacy because a permit is required for the sign too.
Okay.
Stacy, do you know off the top of your head what the, you know, what we're allowed in size when it comes to that for a sign or?
Yeah, our approximate space is six thousand nine hundred and fifty seven square feet total occupancy.
I'm going to probably have to get back with you after chatting with. The commission's counsel, etc. It's based on the linear footage of the layer footage of the front of the building. And if I'm understanding correctly, you pretty much are the front of the building.
Yeah, it's a hundred feet approximately across.
So technically you'd be. Technically, the site is limited to about a hundred square feet of signage. Now, whether that's only your sign or whether there's twenty seven other tenants in the building. The total of about a hundred square feet is what we're going to be looking at.
Typically a ten by ten area.
That's that's one way to get to it, yeah.
Okay, well, just because I'm more I would my next question was going to be, does that include front and back or is that single side? How does that how is that incorporated? Say I want, you know, I'm not sure, I think. South Main Street runs north and south, so if I wanted a north facing sign and a south facing sign, would it? Would we have to divvy that?
It's been interpreted that as long as the the two sides are directly parallel to each other, that it's. Once one sign, you're not counting it twice.
So if you had one sign up in the middle of the parking lot that was double sided.
Yeah.
It only counts as one sign.
Okay, if you're looking at the site plan, you'll notice right in front of the door, there is a marked off area. I don't I believe that's a no parking, I'm not sure if it's in it's if it's suggested handicap. I don't I see two HPs to the left that are it looks like those are proposed handicap parking, so. I'm I'm not sure if it's zoning approved, but I would say most likely the sign would probably go in this front in the. In the front region that's shaded off here in the center of the building.
All right, again, the the sign is not in this paperwork set, so it'll be separate. But it it's not impossible, that's all I want to bring up.
Excellent.
I think I pretty much beat that horse to death. Does any of the commission members have any questions, comments or concerns?
Hi, yes, Tom Mueller.
Go ahead, Tom.
The aerial view. In the meeting packet.
Would you like me to switch to it?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, that picture is that. Basically, what was the office area of the building circled? And a note that says in this area of the building. And yet the testimony said that you're using approximately one third of the building. Seems to be an inconsistency there.
I've never personally seen this photo. Yeah, and that is not my handwriting.
It is not, it is the land use department's assistant, Pat Santa Maria, did that initially prior to our having the site plan and the floor plan. That was provided to you in the initial packet so that you would have a general idea where it was going.
Okay. What you see that circled area from left to right will be men's room, women's room. Staff bathroom, center congregation area. Waiver area, reception office.
Okay, I saw that in the floor plan, it just seemed to be a little inconsistent, I'm okay now.
So I, you know what, I thought I beat the horse to death, but I do have another question. Your your parking is shown as as in two different lots. Is there, Stacy, is there a letter in the package or something that that? From the owner of the next lot that allows the parking or something like that?
Mike owns that other lot. The Panett brothers also own the lot next to us.
If you were to wish to approve it, we would probably want to have that somewhere in the conditions as far as making clear that that parking. Has to remain available.
Because you never know, at some point in time, the Panett brothers could decide to sell that other lot and then you'd be out parking. So that that's just one one I that we got to dot, one T we got to cross. Does any other member of the commission have any questions, comments or concerns? Well, I guess I'll I'll open it up to the public, you want to unmute everybody, Stacy?
Sure.
And does any member of the public wish to comment on this application? And remember, start with your name and address.
Hang on one second. Are you able to do that by any chance? Having an issue finding it?
All right, I have all participants unmuted except for the people that muted it on their end. So again, is there any member of the public that wishes to comment on this application? All right, you want to go ahead and mute everybody again, except the commissioners? Again, I'm going to ask this, any member of the commission have any questions, comments or concerns on this application?
Yes, this is Bill Guerrero. Ralph, a question for Stacy. Do we have any pending zoning violations here with respect to? The facility, the parking on the outside and the storage of of goods and and vehicles?
At one point in time, there was a violation with regard. Side. Related to a auto repairs being done in the back. You're looking at that aerial that I believe I still have up, it's in the back right hand corner. Those have been removed.
Okay.
As of when I passed by, yes.
Okay, thank you, Stacy.
So all the all the existing violations have been cleared up, right? Thank you. Any anybody else from the commission? No, all right, I'm gonna I'm gonna check with the public one more time and then and we'll move on. Does any member of the public, again, wish to comment on this application? All right, not hearing any public comment, I would entertain a motion for the commission to close this public hearing.
Tom Mueller, I make a motion to close the public hearing on special permit application. Number two zero two zero dash zero two dash one eight dash zero one for recreational axe throwing at four thirty seven South Main Street.
Thank you, Tom, is there a second?
Elizabeth Jameson, I'll second.
Thank you, Liz, a motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion on the motion? Again, we're going to do a roll call vote, Phil Guerrero, how do you vote?
Yes, Bill Guerrero votes yes.
Elizabeth Jameson, how do you vote?
Elizabeth Jameson, aye.
Joe Harz, how do you vote?
Joe Harz, aye.
Tom Mueller, how do you vote?
Tom Mueller, aye.
And Ralph Salone also votes aye, so Stacy. The motion to close the public hearing passes unanimously. Now, while we're here, we should take action on this. Does anyone wish to make a motion to approve or deny this permit?
Tom Mueller, I make a motion to approve special permit application. Number two zero two zero dash zero two dash one eight dash zero one for recreational axe throwing at four thirty seven South Main Street.
Thank you, Tom, does someone wish to second that motion?
Joe Harz, I'll second it.
Thank you, Joe. That motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, Bill Guerrero, how do you vote on the motion?
Bill Guerrero votes aye.
Elizabeth Jameson, how do you vote?
Elizabeth Jameson, aye.
Joe Harz, how do you vote?
Joe Harz, aye.
Tom Mueller, how do you vote?
Tom Mueller, aye.
And Ralph Salone also votes aye, so the the motion passes unanimously, Stacy. Next on our agenda, oh, I'm sorry, wait. Litchfield County Axe House, guys.
Yes.
So you're all set? Stacy will be in contact with you tomorrow, Stacy?
Yeah.
Tomorrow, and you can go from there. Now, remember, you're going to have you're going to have to. Do another permit for the BYOB thing and you're going to have to do a sign thing.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. And when in your discussion with Tracy with Stacy, I don't know where Tracy came from, sorry. In your discussions with Stacy, it may make sense to combine those or it may not. We'll see what happens when we talk to Stacy.
Okay.
Okay, Stacy, we'll hear from you soon.
Yes, so you're all set for the evening, if you want to stay, great, if you want to head on out, that's fine too.
Awesome, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, guys.
Good night, guys. Next on our agenda is a public hearing on special permit application number two zero two zero. Dash zero two dash two eight dash zero one for a home occupation for a fuel delivery service office. At six fifty one High Street Extension in an RA eighty residential zone. And the applicant is Christopher Alat, I hope I'm saying that correctly. I see your I see the applicant is in the list of participants. But I don't see a microphone next to his name. Are you audio capable, Mr. Alat?
I see in the Zoom group chat that he has no sound, so let's see.
If you can chat. And let us know by in the chat box, if you can let us know. At the very top of the screen on the right hand side, you'll see more with three dots. If you click on that or press that, you'll see there's a drop down screen and chat is there. Which is what our church was seventy people, it was very interesting.
All right, I see Chris responded to everyone that, yes, he is able to chat. All right, so all right, we're in communications. I guess my my first question is that to the applicant is. I want to verify whether or not you'll be parking any of the fuel oil trucks at that site.
Feel free to to answer via chat if that's the only thing that's working for you, Chris.
Here, let me try.
I was typing it in. Yeah, I haven't gotten a response yet.
No, me neither, listen, let's. Well, yeah, well. Let's I would say let's move on to the next one and we'll come we'll circle back to this and perhaps. Am I saying his name correctly, Alat?
You're saying it the same way I would say, so if we're saying it wrong, Chris, I do apologize.
All right, let's 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 move on and we'll circle back to Mr. Alat. All right, let's 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 move on and we'll circle back to Mr. A. La after we take care of the next thing. Next on the agenda is a public hearing on text amendments to section two definitions and fifteen amendments of the Town of Thomason regs.
He just responded.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm reading his chat that states will not be parking oil truck at residence. I have a parking spot at Terminal in Waterbury when truck is not being used, no oil trucks. And if I may, as a part of the packet that was distributed and posted online, Mr. A. La did state that in his documentation and he provided to the Land Use Office copies of checks showing for Barry that he is paying for.
Does any other member of the commission have any questions, comments, or concerns for Mr. A. La?
Also in the packet were was information demonstrating the floor area being used for his office for the fuel delivery service. And he stated that there were not going to be any employees other than family members.
Any questions, comments, or concerns from any commissioners?
And he's stating right now, no customer parking, no customers, we're going to be coming to the site. And he says no to employees other than family members.
Thank you, Chris. All right, so this is a public hearing. Is there any unmute everybody?
Unmute everybody.
Is there any member of the public that wishes to comment on this application? Not hearing any public comment, I would entertain a motion from the commission to to close this public hearing.
Tom Mueller, I make a motion to close the public hearing on special permit application. Number two zero two zero dash zero two dash two eight dash zero one for home occupation for a fuel oil delivery service office at six fifty one High Street Extension.
Thank you, Tom. Is there a second to that?
Joe Haritz, I'll second.
Thank you, Joe. A motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Bill Guerrero, how do you vote on the motion to close the public hearing?
Bill Guerrero votes aye.
Elizabeth Jameson, how do you vote?
Elizabeth Jameson, aye.
Joe Haritz, how do you vote?
Joe Haritz, aye.
Tom Mueller, how do you vote?
Tom Mueller, aye.
Ralph Salone also votes aye, so the motion to close the public hearing passes unanimously, Stacy. Does any member of the commission wish to make a motion to either approve or just deny the special permit?
Tom Mueller, I make a motion to approve special permit application number two zero two zero dash zero two dash two eight dash zero one for home occupation for a fuel oil delivery service office at six fifty one High Street Extension.
Thank you, Tom. Is there a second to the motion?
Joe Haritz, I'll second it.
Thank you, Joe. Is there a discussion on the motion? Bill Guerrero, how do you vote on the motion to approve the special permit?
Bill Guerrero votes aye.
Elizabeth Jameson, how do you vote?
Elizabeth Jameson, aye.
Joe Haritz, how do you vote?
Joe Haritz, aye.
Tom Mueller, how do you vote?
Tom Mueller, aye.
Ralph Salone also votes aye. So the the commission unanimously approves the special permit application, Stacy.
Well, he just chatted in a question.
Yes, he noted that he was just looking to use an existing room in the house for the office. It's a little unconventional here, but I did neglect to let you guys know that a neighbor had contacted us in support of the application.
Oh, thank you.
All right, so Mr. A. La, I hope I say your name correctly. Your your application has been approved and you're welcome to to stay and listen in or you can drop off now. And just contact Stacy tomorrow to go over all the the nitty gritty details. You're welcome. Good luck. He said he'll be in contact with you tomorrow, Stace. All right, next on our agenda is a public hearing on text amendment sections two definitions and section fifteen amendments of the Thomason zoning regulations. Stace, you want to walk us through them real quick?
Sure, I'm just trying to get back up to them on the screen.
Actually, I think there's a lot you're not going to be able to
I'll try to go as quick as I can. All right, here we go.
Okay, so I have it up on the screen and I can see the entire document. So if there's anything you want to point out, just let me know the number of the page that you're looking for. In a nutshell, the changes sprung from our desire to do a zone change to include additional properties within the downtown development district. You will recall that you had voted to schedule that public hearing a couple of months ago and in the process of preparing for that, we realized that there was a signage requirement for every property in the downtown development district that would be, I mean, being proposed to be added to the downtown development district. And the land administrative assistant Pat explained the significant difficulty in ordering additional signs and the additional fee, which, believe it or not, was around five hundred dollars per sign. At a quick count of twenty six properties, that was obviously going to be quite a bit of money, particularly when the regulations also require if a property is on a corner, then there has to be a sign on each side and that there has to be a sign every two hundred feet. So I had come back to you to let you know this and the consensus was that we would want to consider amending the regulations such that the signage requirements pertain to all applications except for those where the applicant is the Town of Thomason Planning and Zoning Commission. And there is logic to this insofar as you know, an individual property owner may come in and have an application for just that one property, but when you are doing a sign zone change, in all likelihood, there's going to be more than one property and this obviously is an expense to go through for the rare occasions that this is going to happen. I also did conduct a straw poll on the planners' listserv and the vast majority of those who responded stated that the town exempted itself from signage requirements. So with that in mind, it started as just changing that in section fifteen. As I was going through section fifteen, I saw that there might be some other things we would want to put in there and and edit and bring up to current law and make sure we have that all as it needed to be. And I'm just going forward to it right now. And just making clear application requirements and what is necessary for each type of application. And hang on one second.
Stacy, let me just ask you a question. Red is new additions?
Yes.
And strike through is?
Is going to be deleted. Correct. And put a statement in there that if there is missing information, you the application is deemed incomplete and that is grounds for denial. It spells out the notification requirements that the commission's obligated to adhere to under state law in terms of notifying the council of government municipal adjacent properties and, I mean, excuse me, adjacent municipalities and notice to the town clerk's office. There are changes also in addition to the signage we are requesting people to put up because it can be difficult to find because the the regulation specified the color yellow, which I can understand is very visible. But it is difficult. So as a backup plan, we wanted to add in white or yellow. We also wanted to set this up such that we have a stash of approximately three signs currently. Anybody who needs a sign would get it from us. They'd pay a deposit for it. They we'd have the sign all set up so we know that it reads exactly what it needs to read. They take it, they post it, they have their public hearing and within a certain period of time afterward, they return it to us, at which point in time they are reimbursed their deposit. So that is the change to section fifteen. The changes to section two definitions, I'm just getting up there right now, was first of all, was renumbering. Your definitions were not in alphabetical order, which made it a little difficult to find some things, so they would be in alphabetical order. Couple minor typos. You will recall a few months ago, I believe it was over the summer, we had an application where a property where a question arose as far as which was the side yard and which was the rear yard. And unfortunately, our definitions were not particularly helpful to clarify the situation. And that applicant did get resolved by means of the a trip to the zoning board of deals for the property owner in question. However, in an effort to make things clear going forward, there would be this new section two thirty two lot related definitions. And there's an A, B, C, D, E, all the way up through K with the various, all the definitions that are related to lots, lot area, lot frontage, front lot line, etc. And there again, we also have definitions that we're updating for yard under section two, what's proposed, section two point five nine yard related definitions. Yard, front yard, side yard, rear yard, fired yard. And just I was or anyway, we and we had talked about having these two definitions I threw in as well. The definition of self self-service storage facility and an outdoor wood fired boiler. The outdoor wood fired boiler definition comes straight from the DEE pay. And that's largely what was proposed. Now, I did send them off to your attorney to to review and I did get a response from him with some recommendations, which I would suggest that we include in here and those recommendations were, number one, if you go up to section twenty, section two point one, the very first definition is X X accessory, structure, or use. He suggested we add in customarily, so that would instead read a use or structure which is customarily subordinate and incidental. And that would that's pretty much right out of statute, you know, what most towns are using, so that would make that definition clearer. The second suggested change that he had, it was for the definition of building, section two point seven, further down that page. And I completely agree with this one because the definition of building uses the word building to define itself. So what not ideal. So the Attorney Byrne suggested changing the word building in the definition such that it reads any structure containing a room primarily intended, blah, 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 blah. So that was the second change he suggested. He suggested the removal of a comma, section fifteen in in one area that I'm agreeing needs to go. And his last suggestion is in section fifteen again. What would be section fifteen point four notification and referrals? Sure. You can't see what I'm holding in my hand? Okay, there we go. We have the fifteen point four A, which explains that the notice would go to the regional planning agency. We are going to also add in adjoining municipality so that we're fully, we fully state what the requirement for notice is there. So those were the additions that he went with and suggested to us. He is in on this meeting. I suppose if you have a a question, you can unmute and ask. But failing that, those were the only items that he recommended. And I should note for the record that we did notify the council of government regarding this and we did receive back a referral report that there were no issues. I believe I emailed that around you as well. I have received no questions or concerns in office regarding this.
So I have one thing I want to talk about.
Sure.
Two point three two F. The front lot line.
Okay.
If the the way it's written is if it's a corner lot or even some kind of peninsula lot, that definition kind of stumbles. I I think we should add something in there about the street of the street address of the lot. You know what I mean? I I have Attorney Byrne unmuted here. Yeah, do you have anything to add to that, Attorney Byrne?
I had seen where I forget the town, one town actually allows the the property owner to choose what will be his front lot line. But the other option would be, like you said, Ralph, you could also go, what is the street address? That would control the front lot line.
So if I'm the as proposed here, it looks like it would let the property owner determine what would be the front yard. But um, I think we might be better off specifying it as a street address.
Right, we all sometimes like to allow for some freedom, but then, yeah, we all know that the a certain people may make an absurd choice, if you will, with their front lot line. So yeah, do some clarification. That is a simple way to go is just to go with the street addresses. That way it keeps it consistent with the assessors' records.
I'd like to know what the rest of the commission feels about that.
Which paragraph?
And I'm fine with that. I think that further clarifies.
Because then Attorney Byrne bring bring up a good point, then it would match the assessor's map, too. So I I don't hear anybody strongly opposed to that. Did you pencil that in with the rest of the changes that Attorney?
Yeah, already did.
So that was the only thing I wanted to talk about. Does any member of the commission find anything that they want to bring up before I turn it over to the public? All right, so this is a public hearing. Do you want to unmute everybody and we'll go from there? Does any member of the public wish to comment on this? All right, since this is a
I didn't get a chance to unmute it yet. It's not working for me here for a moment. You did, okay.
Since this is a commission initiated action, I'm hesitant to close it too quickly. So I, even though we don't have any strong feeling.
You're not on a timeline, yeah.
Right. I think what I'd like to do is I'd like to continue this to next month also to allow for additional public comment. If if everybody's okay with that. If if everybody's okay with that. Again, if everybody's okay with that, we entertain the motion to continue this to our May.
Tom Mueller, I make a motion to continue the public hearing, our text amendment to section two definitions and fifteen amendments to the town of Thomason zoning regulations until the May meeting.
Thank you, Tom. Is there a second to the motion?
Joe Hartz, I'll second it.
Thank you, Joe. Any discussion on the motion? Bill Guerera, how do you vote on the motion to continue the public hearing for proposed text amendments to our May meeting?
Bill Guerera votes aye.
Elizabeth Jameson, how do you vote?
Elizabeth Jameson, aye.
Joe Hartz, how do you vote?
Joe Hartz, aye.
Tom Mueller, how do you vote?
Tom Mueller, aye.
And Ralph Salone also votes aye. So Stacy, we will continue this public hearing to our next meeting.
Sure.
Next on the agenda, approval of minutes from the March fourth meeting.
Tom Mueller, I make a motion to approve the minutes for the March fourth meeting as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion?
Elizabeth Jameson, second.
Thank you, Liz. Any discussion on the motion? Bill Guerera, how do you vote?
Bill Guerera votes aye.
Elizabeth Jameson, how do you vote?
Elizabeth Jameson, aye.
Joe Hartz, how do you vote?
Joe Hartz, aye.
And Ralph Salone also votes aye. So the motion to approve the minutes of our March fourth meeting passes unanimously, Stacy.
Tom Mueller votes aye too, also.
Do you know?
And you have, next on the agenda is discussion of draft regulation amendments. We'll, we'll continue that. We're not ready to go into that right now. Next, we have new business. Modification of site plan associated with special permit number two zero one nine dash zero one dash three one dash zero one for a brew pub at one thirty-five South Main Street regarding signage and outdoor patio and increase to indoor seating and parking requirements. And the advocate is George LaCapra. George, are you with us?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening. Stacy, you want to pull up any prints on the screen?
Yes.
George, while Stacy's doing that, you want to just give us a quick overview?
Yeah, as the commission knows, last May, you guys approved a a special permit for a brew pub at one thirty-five. After much discussion, late kind of the ballgame, we had changed the space. And so from the front, front of the building on one thirty-five to the back. And with that, we forgot to adjust the capacity of the seating area inside the brewery. So that's one of the items in front of you today. The second was adding investor pool out front where the handicap ramp is in order to accommodate for a weather lock vessel pool for the winter cold season. And then the other thing was for signage out front. In the, another one thing was to add an outdoor seating area. And then just I just had the civil engineer look at the parking requirements again to make sure that the seating capacity can be accommodated with the parking requirements. And that was, that turned out to be fine as well.
Thank you, George. Stacy, would you just refresh my memory for me? Does this require a public hearing?
Well, there, the, that really are directly related to the site plan for the existing approval. So those are kind of more of a modification. The only thing that I see is a potential need for a public hearing would be if you saw that the expand, because the original approval had indicated there wasn't going to be food served on the premises. Another, that is, that is proposed. However, if you go online and look in any online dictionary under the definition of a brew pub, it says that they may also have a restaurant. So that's more of an interpretation for you. I mean, the, the original approval was for, I believe, eighty-seven seats, and now it's up to two hundred and seventy, I believe.
Two seventy-five, yeah. So two seventy, yeah, two seventy-nine. Now, part of that includes the, we did move the space. Like I mentioned, and we had, we, we provided new plans at the meeting, but we just didn't have time. We didn't have time at that, at that moment to update the capacity. So nothing's really changed with the size of the space than what was approved at the meeting, the meeting last May. But we just didn't have, we didn't, we didn't update the capacity. And so all we're doing really right now is updating the capacity to the space to make it accurate.
But this is Bill Guerera, a question, Ralph. Does the increased capacity reflect additional parking or is that based upon area?
For this type of permit, Stacy, check me if I'm wrong, I believe the parking is dictated by the seating, correct?
Yes. And it may be hard to see, but on the site plan I have now up, it's on the bottom of the print here. It's very hard to read, but there is a calculation that's done of all the parking, not only just for the brew pub, but also for the other businesses on site showing that there is adequate parking for this new newly adjusted number.
Okay, can I summarize that once, Stacy?
I think Mr. LaCapra wanted to speak.
Yes, George, I have a question for you too. The, what with the liquor, with the state liquor commission, what type of liquor permit did you pull?
You know, right now, Ralph, there's only, there's only one type of liquor permit in Connecticut. It's a combined permit. So so you can serve, like serve beer wine or liquor with the one permit. They, they do, I've been told in July, they will, they will segregate that back out to have two, two separate permits. But right now it is a combined permit, so if I get my
Are you talking for the, for the current situation we're in?
No, no.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood you.
The state combined the permit to make it easier last year. They did it for a year. And so they combined it, make it into one permit, liquor permit. What I've been told is in July, they're going to segregate it back out to be separate permits. But if you have your permit in before July first, you will operate under the combined permit for one year when it needs to be renewed. Then we'll have to break it out.
No, I thought there was like a restaurant permit, a supermarket permit, a cafe permit. Am I thinking of something wrong, Stacy?
There's, because we do have something going on later on in the agenda related to an alcohol permit. And it was, if you were serving liquor on premises and then it kind of divided out to different places where you might be doing that. Like, for instance, a theater.
That's, I think, Ralph, what you're referring to, that is considered an establishment. We've already, that was determined in the initial
Yeah, that was my question, George. What, what, what was, what was that that was determined at the last go around?
That it was a group of.
Okay. All right, there was a special group of permit. And I, and I believe on the state definitions, it had the service of food included, right?
Yeah, yeah. Originally, it was for light snacks, and then I was going to have food trucks. Now we're going to, we're going to do a pizza oven.
Okay. I don't have any more questions at this point. Does any member of the commission have any questions, comments, or concerns? I think we need to decide whether we need to have this go through a public hearing or not.
And This is Bill Guerera, Ralph.
Yes, Bill, yes.
Usually we reopen a public hearing when there's a material change with respect to the use.
Yes, I agree. And the, and the only real change here is that he's got some additional seating in the same space as originally proposed, so.
Yeah, we have the same footprint. We have enough parking. So is there anything else besides the footprint and the parking?
There is the expansion. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
No, no, go ahead, Stacy, please.
And Mr. LaCapra had mentioned that they are now proposing an outdoor seating area. Still same as what's going on inside. It's just now that they're going to have a small seating area out front as well, which is an addendum to the liquor permit.
Right.
But that's all that is.
How many outdoor seats, George?
Outdoors patio will hold eighty-five.
Eighty-five out of the two seventy-nine or in addition to the two seventy-nine?
Out of the two seventy-nine.
So, you know, for the, for the outdoor stuff, there's some pretty specific requirements, like you have to have a wall of a certain height, et cetera, et cetera, two, two exits and I'm sorry, yeah, and you can't, you can't allow egress from, from the patio out to the parking lot directly, blah, blah, blah.
So, yep, it's right there on the print, Ralph.
I just scrolled down to the, where, where the patio is going to be and that it is going to be in conformance with section twenty-one point five of your regulations, which does, is, is the alcohol beverage service section. And, you know, the, the fencing requirement.
This is Bill Guerera, Ralph and Stacy. I'm almost thinking that the outdoor facility, you know, would require a special permit. Because isn't that how we treated other restaurants who wanted to have outdoor patios? If we look at Epicure, if we look at Cravieaus, right, where they wanted to have outdoor seating to be consistent, did we not go through a public hearing because of the expansion beyond the four walls?
If I may. I can't speak to Cravieaus since that was before my time. With regard to Epicure, the creation of the patio was a site plan approval. The special permit was because he wanted to add live entertainment. Live entertainment was specified in Mr. LaCapra's original approval.
All right, this is Bill Guerera against Stacy. To your point, and the question for George would be with respect to the outdoor seating, you know, would there be any entertainment contemplated within that area?
On the outside, no.
So, Bill, I'm, I'm kind of inclined to think that we, we don't need to have a public hearing on this.
Yeah, I, this is Bill Guerera. I'm, I'm on the same page as you, Ralph. I just wanted to check the boxes, though, only because in the past, when we did require a special a public hearing on this, I just wanted to know exactly what the conditions were that required us to have the public hearing, such as entertainment as an example. Okay. And so if George wanted to have entertainment, then George would need to come back and apply for a special permit. Would that not be correct?
If he wanted to have outdoor entertainment, if he wanted to have it outside, he already, as a condition of the original permit, he's already allowed to have it inside.
Yes, right. But if he wanted to expand it outside.
Then he'd have to come back for another special permit. That, that's a cotton-dried answer.
Yes. And so, George, you understand that?
Yeah, yeah, there's no plan for that right now, but I do understand. Thank you.
Right, I just want to make sure you understand. Okay. That's all I have, Ralph.
So, all right, I think we've determined that we don't need to hold a public hearing on this modification. Does anybody else on the commission, does any other member of the commission have any questions, comments, or concerns?
Yeah, Elizabeth Jameson. I, since this, I guess, new license is slightly different, and I understand that we have that text amendment for getting this in place, but does that put it in another category for the purposes of our regulations? Like, is it considered a restaurant now or is it still, there's still the, because I don't understand the whole, I remember at the time asking a lot of questions about the brewery license. But now that there's this change, I just want to know if there's any difference that in terms of our regs that
That, that's partially why I was asking the question. If I, give me a second, I can get to, so I can quote it better.
I mean, it just reads. I'm, well, I'm just looking at the use table, but, I mean, I don't think so, but I just want to, you know, I was always confused with this.
Well, restaurants and brew pubs are in the same type category in section twenty-one point five, so it's really not changing anything there. If that helps. Type four lists restaurant permits, grocery beer, wine gift basket, manufacturer permits for beer parentheses brewery, manufacturer permits for brew pubs. So it's all in the same category. So there is no change within the bounds of what had originally gotten approved, approval for.
Does that satisfactory answer your question, Liz? Okay. Does any, anybody else have any questions, comments, or concerns? Well, I think we can act on this tonight since we don't require a public hearing. Does any member of the commission wish to make a motions to approve or deny the site plan modification?
Tom Mueller, I make a motion to approve the site plan modification associated with special permit approval number two zero one nine dash zero one dash three one dash zero one issued May first, twenty nineteen for a brew pub at one thirty-five South Main Street.
Thank you, Tom. Is there a second to the motion?
Elizabeth Jameson, I'll second.
Thank you, Liz. Any discussion on the motion?
This is Stephen Byrne. I would just suggest maybe make it as a condition of approval that there be no outdoor entertainment without, you know, further permission. Just to make sure that's clear.
Thank you. Tom, do you wish to amend your motion to accommodate that condition?
Excuse me, if somebody could mute. We're hearing some background conversation. Thank you.
I amend my motion to include the additional conditions mentioned by Attorney Byrne.
Thank you, Tom. Liz, do you still wish to second the amended motion?
Yes, Elizabeth Jameson, I'll second the amended motion.
Thank you. And thanks for catching that, Attorney Byrne.
You're welcome.
Bill Guerera, how do you vote on the motion to approve the site plan modification for the brew pub at one thirty-five South Main Street?
Bill Guerera, aye.
Elizabeth Jameson, how do you vote?
Elizabeth Jameson, aye.
Joe Hartz, how do you vote?
Joe Hartz, aye.
Tom Mueller, how do you vote?
Tom Mueller, aye.
Ralph Salone also votes aye. The motion carries unanimously, Stacy.
Okay.
George, do you have a target date to open this?
I did.
What was the original target date?
I mean, given the survey status, who knows now at this point? I mean, we're shooting for July one. Shame.
Aw.
You might still make it. You might still make it.
We could be cooped up till then, who knows?
I hope not. I've been working from home for about three weeks now, ready to climb the walls. So anyways, George, you're all set.
All right.
Good luck.
Appreciate it.
Let us know how you feel.
All right, very good. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Good night, George.
Night.
Next on our agenda is a modification of special permit approval number two zero one five two zero one five dash zero one dash one six dash zero one issued on February eleventh, two thousand and fifteen for alcoholic beverage service at Landmark Community Theater at the Thomason Opera House at one fifty-eight Main Street. Stacy, do you want to just walk us through what they want to change?
I can. I just wanted to confirm, is Jeff Dunn in the audience? Is, I'm going to briefly unmute everybody. Is Jeff Dunn here?
The only one I don't recognize is one participant that says iPhone.
And I can.
And they just left.
Okay, let me.
Yeah, Jeff's cell phone number?
I do.
You want to?
I'm going to just mute myself briefly.
Okay. You're muted, remember? You're muted. Stacy and I are in the same room. That's why you hear some conversations go, go around.
At a socially acceptable distance.
Yeah, we are more than six feet apart.
I can explain briefly. I did text Jeff. He apologizes. He has something else going on tonight. I did text him. He should be joining us shortly, but just to catch you up to speed. In your packet, you, you will see.
Jeff is in the waiting room. You want to let him in?
Yes, I think that would be a great idea.
Jeff, can you hear us?
Hello.
Hello, Jeff.
How are you?
Good, all right. Stacy, want to start over? Sorry.
Well, Jeff, I was just about to explain.
Can you play audio?
You want to, Jeff, you want to walk us through what you want to do here?
Yes, so this dates back, obviously, you know, we had the approval for thirty events a year and we were working with Jeremy a year or two ago on this. And the way the state was handling the permits, as we know, is a little bit different than how our local rules go. So while we had thirty events a year that we could do here, the state only allows twelve, but they were defining any event as consecutive days, so an entire weekend could be one event. They've changed it last year where every event is one day. So that means it's only twelve days that we would be able to have a liquor permit here, so therefore it becomes kind of pointless even trying to be doing this for the efforts. So Jeremy had suggested last year, well, there is the nonprofit theater liquor license, which is very specific to an organization like mine where we would be allowed to have a liquor license anytime we have an event, and then it also says that you could have twelve additional events beyond there. And Jeremy thought that this may be the best way to go, but he also said, well, maybe, you know, you get, we approved the nonprofit liquor license, but the town would restrict it to the number of events they're comfortable in having here at the opera house, so that, you know, if it's thirty, then, then that would be the the local restriction on the state permit.
So in reality, Jeff, what, what do you think is the max number of events you could have? And for event, if it's a, a weekend-long event, we're going to count that as one.
Yeah, so I think, you know, we don't want to get too crazy with this and there, there are events, you know, if I'm doing a family show or children-oriented show, I'm certainly not looking to have a a a bar services at that, so. But if, if you look at our typical year, which this year would not be it, obviously, we do six productions, each production has eight performances. You know, so having, you know, that forty-eight, forty-eight individual days would, would be wonderful. But would we likely use it for forty-eight? Probably not.
But it's, even though it's forty-eight individual days, it's, it's really like twenty-four weekends, right?
Yeah, less than that. So it's yeah, eighteen, eighteen to twenty weekends. The other, the other thing, though, as you guys are considering this, it doesn't really deal much with me, but because the license and the permissions come with the address and not the organization, people like FACT or some other organization that might be interested in doing something, for example, in the Crescent Gallery, any event that they would do would count against the event that we do. The state views it as organizations, but the town views it as the address.
I have a question for Attorney Byrne. Since, since this is a modification of an existing liquor permit, are we required to hold a public hearing?
Is he unmuted?
He's unmuted.
Okay.
Attorney Byrne, are you there?
I'm sorry, just stepped away for a minute. You can't see me.
So the question was, since this is an application for a modification of an existing liquor permit, are we required by the state to hold a public hearing?
It's a modification and not a new permit. I don't believe so.
But because it is a liquor permit and the town has had a colorful history regarding liquor regulations, I think it might be in everyone's best interest to hold a public hearing, even though when it's not absolutely required. How does the rest of the commission feel about that?
Mr. Chairman, it's Tom Mueller.
Yes, sir.
The application has the box checked that there is not currently a liquor permit at the proposed premises. So it really can't be a modification if there isn't a permit for the premises.
I, you know what, Tom, I see what you're talking about. I believe that is an error on the permit, though, because we did grant a permit last year.
So Ralph, I was going to fill that out and my assumption was that because we get temporary liquor licenses for each event, that there wouldn't be a standing license. You know, and, and when I filled this out. And I, I would, I would also just say too, you know, while I filled, filled this out, life was very different and, you know, like, I'd really like to get this done, you know, in a fairly quick fashion, but you know, the way things stand right now, we seem to have a lot of time on our hands. And for the time being, I can continue, even if I have one production come up even during the summer, I can get the regular temporary liquor license for that one.
And if I may.
Wait a minute, I'm not hearing you. You're not muted.
No, not. Can you hear me now?
No.
Can you hear me now?
Now I can hear you.
Okay. All righty, the packet that you got only has the first page of the liquor permit application. There are additional pages to it. Largely directions for how to fill out the application, but there is one page that specifies has the permit to your backer held a liquor permit in the past, which is checked off yes. Temporary permit gives the number. I believe that had an expiration date, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, of February second, two thousand and nineteen.
That's correct, yes.
So there is, there is that. Just a question for Attorney Byrne. The presence or absence of the permit from the state, would that be a separate thing from what we're looking at? Since we're looking at it according to our regulations?
Right, you're looking under, Stephen Byrne again. Right, Section twenty-one point five of it as well as, you know, your use table, Section four, right, this is your approval, so. You know, the liquor permit that's in the application, that's more just to see the nature of the use that's going to take place at the at the opera house. Really what this commission needs to follow is your own regulations, which does call for leaving your temporary liquor permit, I see. You know, it's for, it's not just for each temporary event, it does cover more than one event. So again, I would just, right, we shouldn't worry too much at this point about the, the state permit, we should focus on our, on our own regulations, so. I was just looking at Section four point five for temporary liquor permits. As well as, of course, Section twenty-one five, twenty-one point five.
Thank you, Attorney Byrne.
So that's your own permit.
Mr. Chairman, Tom Mueller again.
Yes, Tom.
After that page with the application, there's a copy of a notice of granting of the special permit from two thousand and fifteen. It said it's granted for five years and shall expire on February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty. So hasn't that permit already expired?
Attorney Byrne?
Temporary permit, right. That's temporary events.
Well, the special permit, hold on, the special, we're talking about the special permit for temp, for temporary events. And the special permit was granted for a five-year term, and that five-year term ended February twenty-eighth of two thousand and twenty.
Right. Didn't see that, yup.
Was there, I think we had some discussion about time limits on special permits? Attorney Byrne?
Let's see, I'm trying to read the the duration of a temporary permit should be at the discretion of the commission, but may not exceed thirty days per calendar year. And then it goes on, say permits may be administratively renewed yearly by the authorized agent of the commission. It says, if there is no substantial change in use or event dates, the original permit was approved by the commission within five years and the commission did not condition an original approval prohibiting such renewal. So it looks like, I mean, it can be renewed for five-year increments. That was our question? So I think it's, could still be valid, even though
But he is, but he is looking to change the, the conditions. He wants to go to a, a theater permit.
Right, instead of just an event.
I, I almost think we're better off starting from scratch and, and treating it as a, a new application and holding a public hearing, et cetera, et cetera.
It seems like we're trying to, yeah, force it a little bit.
So, if, if I may, Attorney Byrne?
Yes.
If we were to do that, does that supersede this, since, again, special permits are traditionally filed on the land records and are part of the, the property owner's rights?
Normally, right, a special permit runs with the land, but there are some exceptions to that, often quarries or earth excavation, but in this case too, I mean, your, your table of uses, it is a temporary event, it's very nature means, it's, you know, it's temporary, so. It's one of the exceptions to that rule that it runs with the land.
Okay, so this would then supersede then?
Right.
So, is the commission in agreement with me that we should kind of start from scratch and treat this as a, a new application and, and hold the public hearing and, and the whole, run the whole gamut?
I would agree.
Bill?
You're asking me, Ralph, to spill?
I'm, we, I'm taking a straw poll.
Yeah. I'm undecided, actually.
All right, Liz, what do you think?
I guess I'm a little confused by the date, but I guess since it's temporary, we could do it. Then, I guess, I guess doing it would clarify for me, you know, better go, going forward.
Joe Hartz, what do you think?
I would, Joe Hartz, I would side with starting over.
Tom?
Tom Mueller, I agree with starting over with a new applicant.
Ralph, Bill Guerrero. Yeah, I'll go with the consensus of the group.
All right, thank you, Bill. All right, listen, Stacy and I just had a little sidebar about some details. I think this is a little trickier and it's, it's not our run-of-the-middle application. I think what I'd like to do is entertain a motion to continue this to our next meeting and in the meantime, Stacy can work with the applicant and our attorney to iron out some of the details. Is everybody on board with that?
Elizabeth Jameson, does that mean that there would be an application submitted?
It just means that we're not going to take any action tonight. We'll just, we'll, we'll continue our discussion next month and there, there are some details that need to be addressed between now and then.
Oh. Okay.
Anybody else have any concerns? I would entertain a motion to continue this to our next meeting.
Tom Mueller, so moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Joe Hartz, I'll second.
Thank you, Joe. Any discussion on the motion? Bill Guerrero, how do you vote on the motion to continue this to our next meeting?
Bill Guerrero, aye.
Elizabeth Jameson, how do you vote?
Elizabeth Jameson, aye.
Joe Hartz, how do you vote?
Joe Hartz, aye.
Tom Mueller, how do you vote?
Tom Mueller, aye.
Ralph Sloan also votes aye, so the, the vote is unanimous to continue this to our next meeting. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Jeff. We'll, we'll be in touch, okay?
Thank you, Ralph. Hey, could I just ask two quick questions?
That's one.
Great. With this, with the state that we're in, with the online meetings and everything, how does that affect things like public hearings and whatnot?
There's an executive order floating around that allows it, as long as it's open to the public and live-streamed also?
They have, the public has to be able to access it in real time, which they can by joining into the Zoom meeting. We are also exploring doing a live stream in addition, but the public is allowed to come in and encouraged to come into the meeting. The information regarding how to connect into the meeting is on the top of the agenda posted on the website.
And actually, Jeff, prior to your entrance into the meeting, we did have several members of the public, and we did hold several public hearings, and, you know, they didn't go perfectly, but they went okay.
My other question is, depending on the timeline of this, it was our hope that we would be able to get a liquor license for Tinky Boots and possibly Addams Family coming up this year. With this five-year temporary license expiring, would we be able to get approved on a event-by-event basis until we can get something else in place?
Hold on a second, Jeff. Jeff, I don't see any problems with that on the surface, but I think we can talk about that more at the next meeting.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Jeff?
No, that's it for me.
All right, have a good night.
Thanks, you too.
Next on our agenda is special permit application number 20-dash, I'm sorry, 2020-03-30-01 for an accessory apartment at 46 Howard Lane in an R.A. residential zone. And the applicants are Eric and Jennifer Johnson, and I see that the applicants have joined us. I'm going to unmute you. And Eric and Jennifer Johnson, do you want to just quickly walk us through what you want to do?
Sure, Mr. Chairperson, members of the board, my name is Eric Johnson. I'm here with my wife Jennifer. We are of 46 Howard Lane here in Thomaston. We have submitted a special permit application for a accessory apartment, taking our single-family dwelling owner occupied into a slightly larger single-family dwelling, which will also be owner-occupied, and adding an accessory in-law apartment. The details of the apartment, the details of the plot, the proposed plot, have been submitted, and we are petitioning the board for an approval and movement to a hearing for the said accessory apartment. It conforms to the requirements at time of, what do I want to say? We, you know, when we submitted the application, we understood 152, 150 square foot maximum. We don't have an issue at the moment with coverage on the lot. We have sought and received WPCA approval for adding within the dwelling to a second unit for sewer connection. And we're here tonight to present our proposal to the board. Answer any questions.
Thank you. Stacy, does it mean all the accessory apartment regs?
Yes.
Okay. Excuse me. Do any of the members of the commission have any questions, comments, or concerns? So tonight, we're only accepting the application. Our regs require a public hearing, so we can't take any action on it tonight. So if somebody would like to make a motion to accept the special permit and set the public hearing for our May meeting, then we can move forward with that.
That's Tom Mueller. Make a motion to accept special permit application number 2020-03-S30-01 for an accessory apartment at 46 Howard Lane. And set the public hearing for the May meeting.
Thank you, Tom. Is there a second to the motion?
Elizabeth Jameson, second.
Thank you, Liz. Any discussion on the motion? Bill Carrera, how do you vote on the motion to accept the special permit application and set the public hearing for our May meeting?
Bill Carrera, aye.
Elizabeth Jameson, how do you vote?
Elizabeth Jameson, aye.
Joe Hartz, how do you vote?
Joe Hartz, aye.
Tom Mueller, how do you vote?
Tom Mueller, aye.
Ralph Sloan also votes aye. Stacy, the motion carries unanimously. Eric and Jennifer, why don't you contact Stacy tomorrow, and she can go over some of the details of the public hearing with you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairperson, if I may, again, Eric Johnson, could I make an amendment to the new business item C, the spelling of my wife's name on the public record should be capital J-E-N-N-I-F-E-R. I believe it presently is, just showing one N.
Yes, I see that. I see. It's correct on a special permit application. It's just not correct on the agenda, so we'll
We can't. I think I went by what's on the GIS, but we'll take care of that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. We'll see you next month. Well, we'll talk to you next month anyways.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Have a good evening.
You too. Next on our agenda, communications, reports of officers, staff, and committees, anything?
Really not right now. I do not have a report tonight.
The CFPZA annual meeting that was moved from March 26th to April 30th, I think, has been postponed again. If you could comment on that, Attorney Byrne?
Attorney Byrne here, as the executive director, I think, as we stay now, we may need to cancel the April 30th, and this is why, part of the reason why I'm watching your meetings, nice to make sure that it's went well, but also I think we might move online with our with our conference as well, just the way, you know, with all the, you know, the virus quarantines, if you will, being extended, you know, through April, and now maybe even to May a little bit. So that's kind of the direction we're going. So I'll let you know. We'll put an email out or a notice out to keep you guys informed. So it's disappointing, but I think the AquaTurf is actually shut down this month.
I think you're correct, yeah. You know, I understand what's going on, but personally, I'll be disappointed to
Yeah. Yeah, that's all, some discussions, but just seems, you know, we're not sure, like, you know, we thought April 30 would be fine. Now, it's, you know, it's, things are creeping into May.
Before you know it, it'll be September.
That's the thing, right, right.
Don't say that.
Don't say that.
All right, I know that we have at least one item to talk about under executive session, so if somebody would please make a motion to go into executive session and to invite in Stacy and Attorney Byrne.
Tom Mueller, I make the motion to go into executive session and invite Attorney Byrne and Stacy to attend at 9:07 PM.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Joe Hartz, I'll second it.
Thank you, Joe. Any discussion on the motion? Bill Carrera, how do you vote on the motion to go into the executive session?
Bill Carrera, aye.
Elizabeth Jameson?
Elizabeth Jameson, aye.
Joe Hartz?
Joe Hartz, aye.
Tom Mueller?
Tom Mueller, aye.
Ralph Sloan also votes aye. Now, Stacy, how do we?
At this point, the pins are me, and commission members, and Attorney Byrne. Seven total participants.
Except that
Anybody who would come in would have to go into that waiting room, and I simply wouldn't admit them.
Yeah, except that everything is being recorded.
Ah, that's right.
Ah, there you go, yeah. Good point.
Hang on a second. I can, in theory, turn the recording off if you give me a second.